At this time, I call the April meeting of the County Commission to order. We have a very good week of those tonight, mostly commissioners really need, particularly Commissioner Antonakis. And I know you have a full-time job being on that. But I'm going to let Commissioner Antonakis introduce that one for you tonight.
Welcome, everyone. I would just like to introduce Pastor Mike Gilke of Lincoln Methodist Church. He's been with Lincoln Methodist Church.
A little over a year.
I was gonna say a little over a year now. And he's just done a great job. We really enjoy having him. He's very involved in the community. He leads some fellowship of Christian athletes at school. He's just doing a lot of things for our community. So I just applaud him for that and welcome him to our meeting. If you would just come to the podium, and he's gonna give our invocation for the evening.
And when he does after the invocation, Commissioner Antonakis will lead us to the place of his place.
Good Glorious and Gracious Father, we come together tonight looking to discern your will. But first and foremost, we all come before you humbly as the Lord God of the universe. Father, I pray that the Holy Spirit will fill this wonderful room in Lincoln County and guide these commissioners as they make decisions along the way. Decisions that aren't always easy, never enough time or money, resources. But with whatever they are given through the taxpayers of this county, I pray that they will use it to your glory, to your ends, to glorify you in all that they do. In the powerful name of Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
Thank you. Please, please, please.
..................................................................
Thank you, Commissioner Pritzker. Thank the time out of your business getting you to be with us. I have voiced the approval of the amendments without motion that the amendments of previous meetings be approved.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carried. Before we go to the agenda, I have... I would like to add that the commissioners will go into executive session, and that will be item 21. And point 2 will be the adjournment of the commission meeting. The item number... You've already taken that... No, agenda item number eight. Mr. Gray sent an email to us and said that he would postpone his part. He couldn't be here tonight, so I guess he'll put it back on and come at another time. So without objection from the commission, I'll add the executive session and we'll take off the item number eight. Won't discuss it. That being done, then these are the corrections, Madam Clerk, that you make for the record.
Yes, sir.
Okay, is our motion that the agenda be approved?
Motion, Mr. Chairman, to make approve the agenda with the corrections that we made.
And second?
Second.
Commissioner... Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Antonakis. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion has carried. Item six, A is the Office of Emergency Services Director Broom. As you can tell, Director Broom is not here. He's been in a meeting most of the week out of town, Georgia Emergency Management Meeting. He's not here. He was at the work session, but you have his report. If you have any questions, you can contact him.
Chair.
Not our system.
Huh?
That's not our system. I thought it was.
Okay, I hear something rolling.
Lawnmower.
Oh, a lawnmower. Okay, six... Six B is the Recreation Department. You have the report from Director Glaze. He is on vacation this week. School is out, but you do notice that we have some 280 people participating in T-ball, softball, and baseball out at the complex, because they off this week. School's out. We have 28 teams. The opening day was supposedly March the 29th, and Splash Pad and Eddie Fletcher Park opened, I think, Monday. I think it was delayed maybe a day or two before, and we got it. So if you have any questions on that, then you can talk to Director Glaze. Six C is the Finance, Finance Director, Ernie Dawson.
Chairman Commissioners, you have our credit reports. Just a couple of things to let you know. We have put out an RFP for audit services at this time. We haven't put out an RFP for a while. What is your due next week? So we hope to have a recommendation to you next budget meeting. And I have delivered the budget book to the chairman, and he and I have started looking at that, and so we're well on the way of our budget process. Chairman, if there's no other comments, I will give you the cash...
Any comments to Director Dawson? Go ahead.
Our cash report for the month ending March of 2025, our... And you will notice, Commissioners, that our general fund balance is no longer on top. Our top account is our SPOS 7 Fund with $2,369,304. Our general fund has dropped to $1,263,738. I will tell the Commissioners that all of our Hurricane Helene checks for cleanup that we wrote have all gone to the bank, and so that's where that...
Do you have the amount of the total amount?
It was approximately 1.7, but I do not have 1.7 million.
And we still owe about...
We still owe about $69,000. I'm holding those payments till we're insured that FEMA has accepted the work on those folks.
Okay.
Our Solid Waste Fund, $994,029. The American Rescue Plan Fund, $347,648. Our Emergency Fund, $312,133. Our Water Reserve Fund, $258,975. And our Water Fund, $197,631. We do have several other funds, but those are our major funds. The total cash in the bank at the end of March for all of our funds was $7,848,980. And our investment accounts, our Raymond James CDs, $1,632,693. Our Raymond James Enhanced Savings Account, $539,565. The total in Raymond James, $2,163,258. Our total cash and cash equivalents at the end of March was $10,012,200. Okay, I don't know why I can't read this today. $10,012,238. Chairman, that's all of my reports.
Okay, any questions, Director Dawson? If not, Director Seymour, Public Works.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have my written reports for Public Works. I don't have anything to add to those unless you have questions. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, you have a written report from the County Extension Director, who's here, and also from the Director ACOG from the 911. You have their reports in here.
I have one quick question.
Commissioner Clyde.
Director Seymour, I was just gonna ask you, on new homes going in, I see years that we have 16.
Correct.
Do you know how they compare as the last year?
I do not. I haven't looked at that number.
I think we're a little above what it was last year. See a lot of new homes riding around.
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, no other questions, Director Seymour, at this time. Item seven is a public hearing. We're gonna need to go into a public hearing, and I need a motion.
Send me, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Henderson, that we go into executive session. Any discussion?
No, executive hearing. Executive session, we're going into a public hearing.
We are, but we vote to go into public hearing.
That's not what you said, though.
You said it in the executive session.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have it written right beside it. All right, we're going into our public hearing. Any discussion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. We are in our public hearing. Seven A is an applicant from Mr. Brian Arrowood, Director Seymour.
Chairman, on April the 7th, 2025, the Planning Commission heard the following request. The applicant was Byron Arrowood, map 38, parcel 051, better known as 1053 Augusta Highway. It consists of .58 acres. And the request was to apply for setback variance to place a dry storage building in between his building and where the concrete plan is currently today. And so he's requesting a 65-foot variance of 125-foot setback, and the recommendation from my planning commission was approval, and that vote was unanimous, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, you heard it from the director, the recommendation from the planning and zoning is approval of this setback for Mr. Arrowood. Do I hear a motion to accept the approval of the planning zoning board?
Sir, you can't vote during public hearing?
Madam Clerk, that's the reason you get paid real good, is to keep me going. Okay, we got that one. Director Seymour, move to the next one.
Yes. The second one is the applicant of Stan Tankersley, map 54, parcel 083, Augusta Highway. It consists of, I mean, 4.68 acres. Currently is on C2. He is applying for a front setback variance of 75 foot out of 125 to be able to expand his storage facility. My planning commission recommends approval, and that vote was unanimous as well, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Something else I didn't do that I'm supposed to do, and I can't believe I didn't. Is there anybody here that would like to speak for or against the vote on Mr. Arrowood for their approval? No one's here to speak for or against? Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak for or against the approval of Mr. I thought that's the reason some of y'all were here was... Okay, if there's no one here to speak for or against either one, then we can make a motion to come out of our executive se... I mean, our public hearing.
Send me, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion, is that second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Henderson, we come out of the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. We are out of our public hearing. Now we get back to where we were on Mr. Arrowood. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation, planning, zoning board, and approve this variance?
So moved.
Second?
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. The next one is the front setback for Mr. Tankersley. Recommendation of the planning and zoning board is for approval. Is there a motion that we approve this setback?
Send me, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, for the record, I'm abstaining from this vote.
Okay, let the record state, Commissioner Tankersley is abstaining because this is his property. If we could get one more to abstain, I could kill this thing. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Congratulations to both of you. All right, let finish that up. All right, next item is Broad River. Mr. Kyle Peoples, is Mr. Peoples here?
He is.
Huh?
Boy, I thought he was.
Mr. Peoples is not here.
No, sir.
Okay, we'll go on over that one. Item 10 is Courtroom AV Modernization Director Doss. He's gonna take this before he comes. In the work session last week, Court Administrator for the 10th District along with the clerk of Court Clerk Doss met with us, and this was discussed. We don't have to hit it hard, Director Doss. I think you're gonna represent your wife, aren't you?
All right, Chairman, thank you, sir. Chairman Commissioners, as the Chairman mentioned, at last week's meeting, the Court Administrator came in along with Superior Court Clerk Doss to let the county know that we have received a grant of $133,476.67 to do an audiovisual modernization of this courtroom, of this room. And the only string is that the county has to fund the money upfront and then be reimbursed. It's all coming from ARP. And so we're asking... The information is in there, so we're asking the board to authorize the chairman to accept the grant and provide the down payment requested, and then the final payment, and then we will submit the reimbursement for 100% of the cost. And that cost would be 100... The grant's $133,467.67, and we would be receiving 100% of that money back through the grant.
Okay, is there a motion that we accept the grant and pay the initial cost, and we will be reimbursed by the state?
Send me, Mr. Chairman.
And second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Item 11 is a resolution for PST Week, which is April the 13th through the 19th. Director ACOG was here, and at this time, I'll let you speak.
Chairman Commissioners, National Public Safety Telecommunications Week is held annually during the second week of April as a time to honor and celebrate the dedication, commitment, and service of communications officers, also known as 911 dispatchers, who are the first first responders. 911 dispatchers are truly unsung heroes, serving as the crucial first point of contact during emergencies, guiding people through difficult situations. They remain calm under pressure, display empathy and compassion, and are dedicated professionals. Tonight, I am asking the board to adopt a resolution showcasing these individuals who are not recognized nearly as much as they should be.
Thank you, Director ACOG. Don't leave that podium. Stay there for a few minutes. But I will entertain a motion that we adopt the resolution.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. I'll ask the clerk to read the resolution.
Resolution declaring April 13th through the 19th, 2025 as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require law enforcement, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement officers, firefighters, and EMS providers is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our law enforcement officers, firefighters, and EMS providers is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who contact the Lincoln County E-911 Communication Center. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our law enforcement officers, firefighters, and EMS providers by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are critical in improving the chance of survival for patients who experience sudden cardiac arrest or recognizing the need for cold, cardiopulmonary resuscitation, and other life-saving interventions prior to arrival of EMS. And whereas public safety telecommunicators of the Lincoln County E-911 Communication Center has contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. Whereas each telecommunicator has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners declares the week of April 13th through the 19th of 2025 to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the Lincoln County, Georgia, in honor of the individuals whose diligence and professionalism keep our community and citizens safe.
Okay, I'm going to ask, I know we have several people with us, if y'all will meet us, being Director ACOG, at the podium. Before I give this to them, I do want to say on behalf of all the commissioners, how much we do appreciate what y'all do. Y'all unsung heroes, and you don't get paid near what you need to get, but we working on that right now, too, to help a little bit with that. But we do appreciate you, and I hear you a lot, as most of you probably know, I monitor good fit. And for those that don't know, these ladies monitor us every time we meet up here, too, because they can see it down in dispatch. And we have eight... We call it dispatch. We have eight full-time dispatches, and of course, Director ACOG. And we do appreciate everything. I appreciate y'all this. They taking our picture. See that? I appreciate this, all of y'all. Congratulations. Thank y'all for willing to... Commissioner Antonakis.
I was just gonna ask you to introduce these ladies. I know most of them, but I just wanted everyone to hear their names and get a chance to tell them thank you.
This is Cora DeYoung. She's been with us for seven years. This is Supervisor Tamika Crawford. She's been with us for 15 years. And this is Ashlyn Orzakarski, and she is the newest dispatcher. She's been here since December.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all. Appreciate y'all coming with us, too. Okay, we'll move to item number 12 will be the Broad River Resolution. That was what I think Mr. Peoples was here for. And as always, these resolutions, we put on the county's website, and so people can read them if they want to, or they can watch this video. We have a resolution now that's on Broad River. We talked about this at the work session. For those of you that don't know and may be watching, they have some type of poultry facility in Franklin Springs, Georgia. And the waste of that will run into the middle fork of the Broad River and eventually get down into Anthony Shoals and Broad River over the Lincoln County side. And we are wanting to support our friends and neighbors in Franklin, Madison, Elbert, and Wilkes has also did a resolution to date. And this resolution will be transmitted to the Georgia Department of Environmental Protection. I'll ask the clerk to read the resolution, and I'll probably suspend this one after you get started.
Yes, sir. A resolution by the Board of Commissioners of Lincoln County. Whereas Lincoln County, Georgia is home of the Broad River, an invaluable resource that provides recreational opportunities, serves as a critical source of potential potable water for the region, and supports local wildlife and ecosystems. And whereas the residents of Lincoln County, Madison County, Franklin County, Elbert County, and surrounding communities rely on the Broad River for recreational activities, including fishing, boating, and wildlife observation, as well as for its potential in providing clean, potable water. And whereas the development...
Clerk McKellum.
Yes, sir.
Without objection from the commission, I'd like to suspend the reading of the entire resolution.
Yes, sir.
But we will have it transmitted to EPD probably tomorrow. And for anybody that wants, they can read it on the website.
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion that we adopt the resolution?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Commissioners, y'all all have it in your book. I'm sure you read it since last week, and the only thing changed, I think, was the headwaters of the middle fork creek.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carried. Clerk McKellum, if you get that to Director Walton, he can put both of these on the website.
Yes, sir.
We're gonna move now. We'd be through a little bit. Item number 13 is Little Roy and Lizzie, and Jeff and Sherry. This is something that we do every year from our hotel motel taxes, where we give them a little money to help promote it, because it brings a lot of people over those two weekends into Lincoln County that enjoy our new and older restaurants, stay in our motels and campgrounds. I think the Little Roy and Lizzie Festival, and Jeff and Sherry together will have over 4,000 people in the county in a couple of weeks. And I'm gonna ask that we do what we have done in the past, and that's to fund Little Roy and Lizzie. $2,000 that will be paid from the hotel motel tax, and Jeff and Sherry, $2,000 that will be paid from the hotel motel tax will be a total of 4,000 that will come from hotel motel tax. Is there a motion that we approve both of these?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
That's second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Antonakis. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Item number 14 is alcoholic license application for Soap Creek Social Clerk McKellum.
Yes, sir. We have before us Mrs. Elizabeth Jones Dupree, owner of the Soap Creek Social LLC. She is asking for a Class C liquor, beer, and wine on premises license. She has met all her requirements.
Okay, they met all, they're approved for Mr. Free on Soap Creek Social liquor, beer, and wine on premises. Is there a motion that we approve?
Send me, Mr. Chairman.
And second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Item 15 is the equipment donation for the city of... By the City of Harlem to Lincoln County EMS Director Broom. He's not here. We're familiar with it. He presented it to us last week. We have to accept gifts given to the county, and it's a Kirsch gas-powered hop... powers and others. But anyway, it's on his... This is about a total equipment value of $40,000 to $45,000. I'll ask the clerk that she'll be sure in the minutes that this is put in there, what each one is, since I'm not reading off with every one of them all. Is there a motion that we accept this from the City of Harlem that's being given to Lincoln County, and we will assign it to EMS?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
And second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Henderson.
Just wanted to say that I helped Director Broom load it into the truck and get it back to Lincoln County one day last night. to Lincoln County one day last week. It's really nice equipment. We really need to thank them for that.
We will, we will notify the fire department and the city of Harlem when we get that. Okay, we got a motion second. Any discussion? Any more discussion? Chair, here's none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carried. And we do appreciate the city of Harlem. Item sixteen is the GISI LLC agreement Director Dawes.
Chairman Commissioners, you have two contracts. I'll take up the one for the Board of Tax Assessors. We currently and have, we currently use GIS one as our GIS vendor, our vendor for our graphic information system. They maintain our maps and a number of other things for them. We've been using them for a number of years and it appears that our contracts have expired and so we're just bringing forth a new contract. These are all budgeted funds. So the contract for the Tax Assessor's Office for partial maintenance and center road line maintenance and the COVA calculations is three hundred and forty dollars a month or four thousand eighty dollars a year. And I'm asking the board to authorize the chairman to sign that contract. And that is a budgeted item that we have budgeted.
Okay, we discussed this last week in length. Is there a motion to give me a thought through this and sign the contract?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tankerson, second by Commissioner Anthony Knox. Any discussion on the motion? This is for the Tax Assessors. Chair, here's none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like sign, the motion is carried, Director Dawes.
Chairman Commissioners, the second motion would be for a similar contract with GIS one to provide consulting services to our community development department. Again, they maintain all of our maps, they make all of our changes for us, they do all of our address assignments. This contract would have a not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. Again, it is a budgeted amount and I'd ask the board to authorize the chairman to execute the contract and approve the contract and authorize the chairman to sign it.
Is there a motion to approve the contract for me to sign?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Anthony Knox, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, here's none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carried. Clerk, you got that motion?
Yes, sir.
Right, I know. Item seventeen, Civic Plus Community Development Director Seymour, and we discussed this one too.
Yes, sir, we did. What I'm asking for here, Chairman, is for the board to approve the signing of a contract with Civic Plus, which would allow us to move our building permits, code enforcement, planning and zoning and C Click Fix all into one contract. We currently have several different software vendors that we're using. This would all put it under one software vendor where we only have to deal with one. There is some initial setup costs that would cost us about seventy, seven hundred and fifty dollars. But then in the first year, you're gonna pay seventy, seven hundred and fifty dollars more than what you're paying now. And then every year after that, it'd be about fifteen hundred dollar a year savings. It is a budgeted item, so it would, you know, just be budgeted every year that moves forward. But it would allow us to do several different things that we can't do now, plus it would put it under one vendor.
Director Seymour, I'm showing seven thousand, seven hundred, you saying seven thousand, seven fifty?
It's seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I see it right down there. Okay, I got seven, seven, my mistake. Can you believe that?
No, sir. I didn't have a quarter. I can't, I can't either.
Okay, y'all have heard it. We've discussed it. Is there a motion that we accept the contract and do this with Civic Plus?
I made the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Now, second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? Clerk, if you would, be sure to get that exactly right, what that motion is, with the correct money. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carried. Item eighteen is an update to the LMEG T-Splash cost, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The LMEG list that you currently have in front of you was approved in an earlier meeting. And this is kind of an updated list on where we're at in the total amount of pricing that we have. So currently today, we have one million, three hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and one cent in our LMEG and LRA account. That's what we already currently have. The amount of these projects totals one million, four hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars, twenty-eight cents, which means the difference would be paid for out of our T-Splash twenty-five percent discretionary funds in the amount of one hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents. Mr. Chairman, I'm not a hundred percent sure if you want to get a vote on this exact amount since it was pre-approved or if you just wanted to do an update.
Well, I think we can. I think we're pretty close. If we off, we'll bring back what we off.
Okay.
Because it could be some shuffling around and I know what you're talking about, but we need to approve a certain amount.
Okay.
If we go over it, we'll bring it back and if we go under, we just-
My hopes we're gonna be up under, Chairman.
I hope we are too. Let me be sure we all clear. LMEG is local maintenance improvement grant and we get that based on road mileage every year. The local road, LRA, local road activity assistance is, that's something fortunately we've been able to get last year and again this year from DOT and I think that amount was-
This year was four-
Four hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-nine cents. That's where those will be coming from and I think what you said, and I'm saying this while I'm clear of what I got. That one million, three hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and a penny is from those two monies. It was short by a hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents. So we approved it to pay that amount out of the T-Splash fund.
That is correct, yes, sir.
And that gives us the total of a million, four hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-eight cents.
That is correct, yes, sir.
And let me, for those that are listening, I think this might be on the website, it could be, but this is for triple surfacing some roads on our resurfacing. And a good bit of it is for milling and patching that we have to do before we can do it. So we got, there's two companies involved in this. That's ASA and-
Elts.
Elts Brothers and-
And then this also includes striping, Chairman.
This also includes the striping of them. And we discussed this the other day. I know the Commissioners understand, just trying to let everybody else understand a little bit too. So I guess what I need now is a motion that we take a million, three hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and one penny out of the combined LMEG, LRA monies and a hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars, twenty-seven cents from the T-Splash. I could do that all in one motion, right?
Yes, sir, Chairman.
At a total cost of a million, four hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-eight cents is what you approved it. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Anthony Knox, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion? Chair, here's none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carried, is carried. We are hoping to put up some signs. We got some T-Splash signs because you heard what was in the report of how much money we had and we spend virtually zero monies from the general fund. General funds was supported by the property taxes we pay every year. All of this is coming from somewhere else other than general fund, local property tax money. T-Splash is very vital to Lincoln County. Without T-Splash, I don't know what we would do. That's where we pay for a good bit of our gravel that goes on gravel roads. I think we budgeted something like a hundred thousand dollars of T-Splash money to go to that. While I'm on this road, T-Splash also, you'll see, I saw signs go up on Double Branches Road and-
Chamberlain Ferry.
Chamberlain Ferry, I just saw them going down the road. Hopefully they fix to get started until this might be October. Do you know if they-
I do not know.
Ask them to do it earlier. That's being paid for with T-Splash of the seventy-five percent T-Splash money. That's four point two million dollars is fixed to be spent in addition to this million, four hundred and seventy-four thousand. It's fixed to be spent on resurfacing nineteen miles of road, which is Double Branches Road, Chamberlain Ferry Road, Potbridge Town Road, Calvin Kennedy Road and Mercier Road. Those roads will be resurfaced with T-Splash money. Plus, we will be paving two roads. That won't happen this summer probably, but they're gonna be done. That's McGill Road and Goldman Johnson Road. And that's to the tune of about two million?
Yes, sir, about two apiece, about two million apiece.
About two million apiece.
Yes, sir.
That's another four million that's being done. I think we doing somewhere around in the next twelve months, probably about twelve million dollars in road resurfacing and paving of those two roads. None of that could be done if you don't continue to vote for T-Splash and it'll be back on the ballot in about eight years. So I know for the next four years, you gonna hear me talking about voting for T-Splash because if you didn't have it, we wouldn't have the money to pave these roads and some paved roads would go back to dirt roads. We got a motion, second, do we vote? Okay, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carried. So we get that started. Nineteen is E-911, no wonder y'all stayed. Nineteen is the E-911 Communications Center relocation, Director Seymour. I know Commissioner Tankerson, between two of y'all go handle this. But Commissioner, what you saw last week on what he drew out, they don't have a new one do.
They do not, no, sir.
That has been changed a little bit. And you can ask Director Seymour why, but it was because of heating and air conditioning ducts and some other things and we made a few changes to the inside of it. Commissioner Henderson called, I think yesterday or day before about a question and we got all this worked out. But that's changing a little bit, but it's not changing enough that it's making any difference. And we got, he brought me a big copy of it when he came over here this afternoon. Who's taking the lead? You or Commissioner Tankerson?
It don't make no difference. You can go ahead if you want to.
That'd be fine. Let me say something else. The reason that Commissioner Tankerson's doing this, we have four standing committees. General Government Committee has met and looked at this and that's made up of Commissioner Tankerson, Commissioner Anthony Knox. They brought it to the work session last week and of course he driving the train, so go ahead.
Yes, sir. As you said, Chairman, the General Government Committee, which consists of the two Commissioners as well as myself, Ernie, our Director Dawes, Director Walton and Director ACOG, all met and discussed the layout and moving the current nine-one-one dispatch location from its current location out to the OES headquarters where we have an abundant amount of space out there. One of the issues there is, in the current location is, is it's in dire repair. It needs a lot of repair, work done. And so in order to do that repair, nine-one-one was gonna have to relocate anyway to a secondary location for probably ninety days or better. And then we would spend the money on the building to renew it, bring it back up. But the problem down there is that they're clearly just running out of space. Where they're currently at now, they have two consoles with a third, but no room to expand beyond that. So we've been looking at this for a couple of years. This has been, this has gone back since I think about late twenty-two, twenty-three. And so what we're asking is to relocate. That way we only have to move them one time. We don't have to relocate them for thirty, sixty days or ninety days and then move them back, which is a cost. There's a cost to move them and then move them back. We're looking at making the one move and that's it. They would be temporarily displaced for, I think we said about three to five days as we get the vendors to move their equipment over there. We already have a temporary location set up, which would be in the conference room at Public Works Office for about a week. They've got, they have to have a bathroom, kitchen, all of that stuff. So they have everything that they need over there. Plus, I think Director ACOG's already done some testing with the radios and it's good incoming and outgoing. So we've got that settled. So what we're asking is, is that we approve a relocation of the E-911 Dispatch Center to the OES headquarters. Got you a budget in front of you. It's about a hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and ten. I think the recommendation from the committee was to set a budget not to exceed two hundred thousand. And that's what we're asking for, Chairman.
Okay, before we do this, I know how much time Director ACOG, Walton, Dawes, Seymour have spent on getting all this together. And it's been a lot. This is a pretty big move. It's the building of the walls inside the headquarters out there on Global Drive is where it's moving to. It's not near the big deal as to moving all this equipment and bringing it in. It's gonna be a nice facility if y'all, I hope you ladies have looked at the, she showed it maybe to y'all, you can see what it's gonna do with a revised one anyway, you know, you're looking at the old one. But we are doing this for many, many years to come and I think we're going from basically two places to three to begin with and then it'll also be set up where you can have the fourth. So at some point in time, as the county grows, you'll end up, one day we'll have four dispatches on duty at a time. Now, that's not gonna be three day and Christmas, but this is gonna be it. But we building it for twenty years or so down the road and I told Robert this afternoon, Director Seymour this afternoon, that building will probably be obsolete and everything will be gone by the time we outgrow weather, communications is going out there. So I guess with, what we need to do is to, the cost of this is hopefully a hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. We're asking the Commission to approve, the committee is, to approve two hundred, up to two hundred thousand. Hopefully we won't have to do it. We have had one that was even less than what we thought. We built EMS building Station Eleven. This money will come out of the special purpose local option sales tax. Again, that's something that the people vote for and do is separate from the T-Splash, but this money is coming from special purpose local option sales tax and not from general fund, local property taxes. So remember, you better continue to vote for these taxes or we wouldn't be able to do nothing. Is there a motion then that we accept the recommendation of the General Government Committee as presented?
So, go ahead.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Commissioner Anthony Knox.
Second.
By Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion?
Chairman.
Commissioner Tankerson.
I just wanna thank them for everybody involved, all the department heads for all the effort and work they put into this. This is a move for the future and it should no doubt have a lifespan of minimum twenty years. And instead of putting a Band-Aid on something, I feel like we're moving forward as a county and we're preparing for the future. The money that we would spend over here on the old building would really just be a Band-Aid on a short-term situation. And again, I just wanna thank y'all for all your work and all the planning that's gone into it. I know it's been a lot of it, so thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like sign, the motion carried. It looks like we'll be on the way. Director Seymour, before you walk off, do you have any timeline of when this might? I know y'all met today with Mr. Gumby and others.
We did. We're still in the process of meeting with vendors to get a hard date from them as to go ahead and schedule them and then we're gonna work back- We did. We're still in the process of meeting with vendors to get a hard date from them as to go ahead and schedule them, and then we're gonna work back. We feel like somewhere in the sixty to ninety day range, so three months total, that's everything. That's them moving in. Hopefully, it'll be shorter. It just, a lot depends on the vendors. You've got multiple vendors that have to move equipment, and so it will depend on their timeline.
But what about the building part of it?
The building part of it, we're probably gonna go ahead and get started on next week. And that way, we'll be ahead of the game. If we're built out and we still have to wait two or three weeks to get vendors in there, I'd rather do that than to-
Oh, yeah.
Than to not them be waiting on us.
That's correct.
Yeah.
All right, so that sounds good. Okay, the next item on the agenda is appointments to the Department of Family and Children's Services Board, Commissioner Antonakis.
Chairman, I've spoken to Renee Guthrie, and she is willing to continue serving on the D-Fax Board, so I would like to appoint her for District Two.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Antonakis to reappoint Renee Guthrie to the D-Fax Board. Now, it'll be for a term which I think she served one year of that term, so we gotta get that corrected when we do it. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Tankersley for Ms. Guthrie to continue on the D-Fax Board. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion's carried. Commissioner Tankersley, you have an appointment?
Uh, Commissioner, Chairman, I'm on firm mind next month. I do not have a firm answer.
I know one of them turned you down, didn't it? Okay. All right, we'll lay that, Mr. Clerk, if you'll let that be known, we'll bring that back up at the next meeting. The next thing is, is we need to go into executive session to discuss some legal matters. And we'll need a motion to go into executive session. Is there a motion?
Send me, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? Chair, here's none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion's carried, and we are going into executive session. I'm going to ask, Mr. Clerk, the county attorney will always go, but I want Director Dawson, Director Seymour to come in on this too. Okay, we, I need a vote to come out of our executive session.
I make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second? Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion to come out of the executive session? Chair, here's none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like sign, and the motion's carried. We are back into our regular meeting in our executive session. We talked to our attorney on some legal matters that the county is facing, but no votes were taken. And that's the end of our executive session.
Chairman. You need a motion to authorize you to sign the affidavit that there were no votes taken in the executive session?
Is there a motion that we, is there a motion that says that we don't?
It's a motion to authorize Chairman to sign the affidavit that there were no votes taken in the executive session.
Y'all give me the authority to sign saying that no vote was taken while we were in the executive session. Second? Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, here's none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion's carried. Is there a motion that we adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second? Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, here's none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion is carried, and we stand adjourned.